Okay, today is March 10th, 2014. It's roughly 6:30. This is a meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission operating without a quorum, although I understand we will be getting one soon. So we are going to go over some things that do not require action. This meeting is open to the public, and the public is here. We could probably hear from him now, right?
Sure.
Okay, so we need to hold off on approving the minutes. We can do announcements. Do we have announcements?
Yes, we do. There's a revised public notice from the town advising that the select board of the town of Brattleboro by its own motion will hold a hearing and site visit pursuant to Title 19 of Vermont Statute's annotated Chapter 7 and the Brattleboro Town Charter Article 4, Section 6E on April 7th, 2014 commencing at 5:30 PM for the purpose of considering whether to lay out and establish as a town highway the gravel turnaround on property of Peggy Lapata and Gabriel Siska-Lapata at 176 New England Drive in Brattleboro. And so this is a public notice to bring to the attention of the public and others that public meeting, and the planning commission by statute is required to be advised of that. So, there you go.
Anything else? Well, we're doing this for the third consecutive month. I will announce that we have an open position on the planning commission. And if you out there in TV land are interested in doing tasks like rewriting the entire zoning bylaws for the town of Brattleboro that affect literally every piece of property in the town...
Don't scare people.
I would see that as some interesting thing that you could be involved in, but then you should consider joining the planning commission. We're going to undertake that fairly shortly, and we've just rewritten the subdivision ordinances, and hopefully that passes. And this will have a significant effect on how development in the town is carried out for years in the future. So if you care about the way Brattleboro looks, or develops, or its economy, and you want to have your voice heard as statutes are written, or ordinances as I should say, apply with the town manager. I'm going to make that more forceful every month. Public comment. We have a member...
That's going to be like crazy.
Yeah, it's going to be like an old German propaganda films. James, you're a member of the public. Do you wish to public comment?
Sure.
And don't forget to identify yourself.
James Ban Slaybin, District 2. I kind of like the plan on the cell phone, uh, cell tower. It looks like a tree, just like Disney World. I like the elevation and the height. I like the plan so far. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We are going to hold the review of the Act 248 application. That's the cell tower application to which James was just referring. Are we able to, we should probably wait to review...
Yeah, we can't do that.
...right clover commons.
Yep.
Can we do a review of our education outreach on the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I took the comments that you had on the last slideshow. I also had a chance to run through it with the Conservation Commission, and I've made changes because the flow of it wasn't working, and I thought that the slides were, there was just a lot of information that I'm kind of stumbling through speaking to it.
Oh, you're okay, see?
How do I get it back up?
Yeah, hit that button. It'll look, there you go. And then walk into that.
Uh, day?
10. Oh, so it's, yeah, 9:06.
Yeah. We have a month remaining. Going to change that.
Why?
Oh, because we don't know.
Oh my God, that's right. Blank that out.
So, here's the new presentation. I'm interested in your feedback. So this is not a new slide, but the purpose is a subdivision review. We'll start with that, and maybe talking a little bit about what we, the process that we've gone through. And then you've seen these slides, what we've heard from the EPA workshop and from the town And this is a new slide, so why are we writing new regulations? Because we want new appropriate standards. Right now, we have uniform standards for the most part, and they're not, they're a lot dated. We want to simplify the process, and we want to increase flexibility in how people can develop their land.
Can we also mention that the old regulations are obsolete there?
Yes, that had been in them. Do you want it on the slide?
I think it's a good thing to lead with. Because to me, that's the most compelling argument. We're getting to a point where people are forced to either break the law or do development in a certain...
I actually did have as a, like, a talking point that we were updating the standards. I can say that they're obsolete, or regulations date back to the 1980s and...
I just wanted to be clear to people that this is like a major problem that we're fixing.
And what would be an example?
Roads. The, the, the standards we're forced people to build roads to that are inconsistent with everything else that's current.
Hi.
Okay. Let the record reflect that at 6:40, we do have a quorum.
Hello.
Sorry.
You missed, you missed some engaging community conversation, but...
Dang it.
Yeah. There'll be, there'll be a quiz later.
Lit, write one of the Rolling Stones.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Sure you refuse to get in this car?
Sorry, you were saying that the planning committee is not good?
Um, you know, they are obsolete, but the obsolescence issue is a kind of, I don't want to say it's inside baseball, but it's a little bit... That sets up concerns for the DAB, but it's not, and it would, and it would be something that the town and the planning commission would want to address. But I don't think it's the, I don't actually think it's the major motivation here. And so I actually changed this slide just to say appropriate standards, and in my mind, the backstory, which is it causes some consternation and difficulty for permitting purposes at the DAB is part of it, but a bigger part of it is that the town plan process established appropriate standards for subdivision regulations, and that's what we're trying to do. So I would actually say, for the most part, this slide presentation is about the dramatically different subdivision process for rural and rural residential, and that's really not about the technical issues that, that trouble the DAB.
Okay.
So, which is not to say that's not important, but it's not the main, for me, it wasn't the main thrust of what we're trying to educate the public around.
Okay.
Right? Just to sort of draw that distinction.
I was just going to go down to think that we're impulsively making changes for changes.
No, I mean, I would say, you know, it's hard to think, say that we've been impulsive after three years of the town plan, but...
I'm sure that they were.
Impulsive, that just means they never come to the meetings.
Right. Well, a lot of people got that problem.
Mark James.
Right. Okay. So I, you know, I, maybe, so if you're okay with those talking points, I don't know. Sue's background, I think, was good, the talking point part.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, and here's one of our, one of the, some of the ways that we're going to simplify the regulations is that lot line adjustments are now going to be approved administratively. So I'll show you a, in a slide or two what lot line adjustments are, but right now, they are required to go before the board, and it's a pretty simple procedure. So now the zoning administrator has the authority to approve those. And then we've created two sets of standards. There's neighborhood subdivisions and rural subdivisions. The neighborhood subdivisions are generally the more dense parts of town, so they're where the clusters of yellow and red and blue dots are. If you think it's useful, the Conservation Commission thought it would be useful to run through the zoning districts, but we have so many zoning districts right now, so not... We can have that aside if people start asking questions, but I thought for the purposes of presentation, it's just...
You could bring a zoning map.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and so if the questions start, we have it. And then the rural subdivisions are pretty much the far western parts of, or the western parts of town. It's all the green, very, it's like greener in some sense. First, I'm going to talk about neighborhood subdivisions. So the types of subdivisions that we see going on in these areas, which are the more developed and compact parts of town, are, we're getting one or two lot subdivisions between, using existing infrastructures. So if you look at the subdivision below, you had, it had been one lot, now it's two lots. They're pretty small, they're less than a half an acre lot, but you can still develop on that. So they're in existing neighborhoods, and that's in the development, creating more building lots. And then what you see on the picture to the right is a lot line adjustment. So in this case, the boundary line between the two properties is changing, and that's that yellow highlighted area is just swapping from one landowner to the next. And so that's what we will allow to be administratively. We'll still require a survey, but, so that's what we're seeing in the neighborhood areas. And so our goals for neighborhood subdivisions are, and our standards will reflect us, is that we'll have uniform lot sizes that are compatible with the zoning, that we're looking to have denser development, walkable, so we'll be requiring sidewalks. And generally, these are connected to municipal utilities such as the water and sewer system, and so there's some standards that deal with those kind of connections. And so there's relatively few standards for the neighborhood subdivision standards. It's pretty, kind of straightforward process, but because we're not seeing large lot development in this area, it's pretty simple. Then there's the rural subdivisions, and I haven't really figured out how exactly to speak to this slide. Yeah, so if you have any suggestions. I think you're seeing two things. When I look at this, I see two types of rural subdivisions. So we see a lot of road development here along the road, but then we have a little less development, which is kind of a different cluster type of subdivision.
So, yeah. So you're looking for how to say that this is better? Is that what you're looking for, that, on this slide, or...
Well, I'm not even sure these, like, title slides are even, yeah, I mean, I guess it's just an example. I'm not even sure these title slides are...
I wouldn't necessarily feel compelled to talk to it.
Well, one of the big things for me that I, that I liked about it was, I mean, to me, this was more, more about the rural than any of the other things, was to protect the character of the rural areas, but to still allow the subdivisions. And that's what really motivated me to be, get involved on this particular issue, was protecting the countryside, our natural landscape as it is.
Good point, yeah.
But still allowing for well-thought-out development that respects the land.
And when you talk about rural subdivisions, are you talking about modifying existing, or in case there are future developments in rural areas?
No, future development, not modifying what exists. We can't do that.
Well, I mean, like, how does this tie into somebody who wants to subdivide a, an existing lot? Like, in this example, like, if somebody wants to split up that property, remember the slide that you showed us in the last meeting, how you have, like, one lot in front of another one in back, and they get easement or something? Is that...
Yeah, I'm going to get there.
Okay, so it's something.
Yeah, so this is kind of a title slide, but I think maybe something along on, so what we're trying to do, why there's a different set of standards.
This definitely shows a traditional pattern of rural development, which is strung out along the road. I mean, the one thing that's a little odd is, you can see that kind of, the Hillwinds North Road, there's two basic arms to that, and it runs along that ridge line. You can't really pick it out from this slide about the open space. It's just too nuanced, the information about that, but I would just say it's a pretty good portrayal of the traditional settlement patterns, so.
So primarily, what we're seeing in the rural parts of town for subdivision is four less lots, and we have locations where there's more, and they're on individual septic systems and individual wells. We're not seeing a lot of new road development, and if it is, if one is being created, it's a private road, and only because it needs to be a road rather than a driveway, because the number of houses it's serving, which once you're over two, it's considered a road. And then we're seeing, we're still seeing subdivisions along the existing road frontage. And so this is an example of a private road that was created, and there's four lots off the private road. And so our goals for the rural subdivisions are to minimize land disturbance, and that's important because it results in erosion and sedimentation. It can, if you're removing a lot of trees, it can, and vegetation on steep slopes, it destabilizes them, and then the soil is going to be washed downstream, and we already have, in the western part of Brattleboro, we did have a flood risk. And then if you're removing a lot of trees, land disturbance will alter existing drainage patterns, and then that can, if there's a lot of precipitation, it can affect the town roads, other properties, water quality, and results in flooding. It can cause streambank erosion with an increase of stormwater runoff, and that could get us into trouble with the state. I don't know if I'm talking towards to that. Our other goals are to protect wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes, and river carrying corridors, to treat natural and cultural resources as amenities, and to permit the grouping of homes. And these are all things that we heard in both the town plan outreach and the EPA workshop.
When you're talking about permit grouping of houses, maybe we could add to maintain the rural character.
This slide has some issues, because I haven't been able to figure out my, my little planning how I'm going to do it, but, so we're really seeking to address two, two issues that we find that a typical subdivision process, I guess, is...
Is this, this is for neighborhood and rural?
No, this is just for the rural.
Right.
So then for number one, when you're saying conventional, blah blah blah, so that it doesn't, its goal is not to maintain the rural character?
Yeah, because I think to what you're saying, a lot of people just naturally, as a society, yeah, we want the maximum use out of everything. So if I was a person of the public, I'd be like, well, yeah, that's what I want, is the maximum use of my land. So if you could put, like, an ad on saying, but at the possible detriment of the land, so you're saying, like, yeah, you're getting the maximum use, but it actually could be worse than taking less.
This was, this was also to be a lead-in to talking about how the theoretical yield versus the actual yield, and so, but I think, I agree, like, linking it to the rural countryside.
So can I just ask, I didn't notice this before when I was reviewing it this afternoon, but do you mean zoning, or do you mean subdivision?
I mean zoning, because it's tied to the minimum lot size.
Yeah, right.
I would use the term like rural sprawl.
Yeah.
Real clear.
I could say minimum lot size, if you think it's too confusing to say conventional zoning.
Yeah, I would say minimum, I would say minimum lot size encourages, and I wouldn't say use of the land so much as, it might be a bit loaded, but I would use the term like exploitation of the land for housing.
Well, rural sprawl was a good...
Rural sprawl, rural, I can't say it, rural sprawl is really good, as a thing to say.
So minimum lot size encourages rural sprawl?
Right. Yes, I would just say minimum lot size is encourage rural sprawl.
Okay. Okay. And then the, the second issue that we're seeking to address is, is that the existing subdivision regulations don't allow for flexibility. So this didn't...
I changed it to...
I want it to be like, yeah, that's okay. I want it to be like, here's the first issue, here's the, and I can't figure out the timing, I'm like, probably not slides.
You make another slide, so when you, so then you...
We can figure it out.
Press, yeah, so when you press the button once, you get the first thing?
Yeah.
And then the next, you press it again?
I've done it before, I don't know when I'm...
Yeah, I know.
It's, I think it's this version.
Yeah, that's right.
But the response to the first issue is that we're proposing to change the way we calculate the number of lots that can be created, and then for flexibility, our responses to, we have new expectations of how the subdivision is designed, and so I'm going to walk through those too. So for the first issue, changing the way we calculate the number of lots, we have a set of steps. First, we're going to determine the buildable area, then we're going to determine the number of lots, and then we're going to apply density incentives. So our existing subdivision regulations give you a lot, number of lots based on the total parcel acre, acreage. So you'll see in the slide to the left, there's seven acres of land, if you look at it as a blank piece of paper. But when you actually add additional information to it, you'll see that the land actually has some constraints to it. So that's what we're seeking to get to, to understand the conditions of, of the land. And so in our proposed subdivision regulations, we're going to calculate the number of lots based on the buildable area of the parcel. So the same lot that appears to be seven acres actually has wetlands on it, and it has a buffer area for wetlands, that's a state buffer area, and also the local zoning has it at 50 feet, 50 feet from the wetland. So in total, there is three acres of unbuilt the land on that parcel. So in reality, there's only four acres that can be built upon. So we're going to have the lot yield be based on the buildable area. I want to do another example showing steep slopes. And so the determinant for buildable area will be wetlands, steep slopes, those are slopes greater than 25%, floodplain area, special flood hazard area, and then we do take a portion that is a setback from surface waters. And as you see, when you look at this map of Brattleboro, that there are a lot of constraints, and the result will be different for each parcel.
Can I have for one second? What's the dark red?
Steep slopes.
I thought that's the red with the lines.
Yeah.
There are areas of red, is that just like buffer?
I think it's just that the, this could be the...
You know, it's just the way it looks from the back there. Sorry.
And the blue is floodplain?
The blue is floodplain.
Even though it comes out violet, yeah.
So the white is what the buildable areas are?
Well, we only calculated it, the white is, is, not part of the rural, yes, others on the, so it's not rural and rural residential. We mapped it for the entire town, but...
So you can see where the retreat middles is, just to the west of that, you can see a slight change, like, there's a white background.
It's a pale green.
And then it goes to pale green. So that's rural residential. And then the darker green, the more obvious green, that's about halfway across the image is rural. I think actually, changing the strength of the middle-ish, of the rural residential green could be worth it.
Yeah, I didn't even realize. I thought it was one, I just thought there were two colors.
Okay.
I thought it was one too.
Yeah.
I was up there.
So the second, the second part of determining the number of lots is to look at the primitive density based on the features. So we have, after a lot of consideration of different features, the planning commission settled on one unit per, sorry, one lot per two acres of buildable area if you're in the rural residential district, one lot per four acres of buildable area if you're in the rural zoning district, and if you have, are located on a class four town highway access, and that is your only access, it's a density of one unit, of one lot per 12 acres of buildable area.
Maybe you should say lot.
And then the reason that class fours, that we don't want to encourage development on class four town highway, town roads, is that the town has no obligation to maintain anything about but the bridges and the culverts, and so as a consequence, some in Brattleboro don't have year-round access. There's no guarantee that emergency vehicles can access a house up there or property, and we believe there's an unreasonable expense of providing services to these parts of town, because they're pretty isolated. You have to start getting bus service or even emergency services.
Are any of those people allowed to make their house into a two-family if they live there?
Yeah, they're not allowed.
Yeah. One or two family dwellings are a protected category under state statute. It's three and above that gets pre-ear.
So if we go back to our example where I showed you the buildable area concept, we have four buildable acres remaining on this parcel. It happens to be in the rural residential zoning district, so they can get two lots out of, out of this property. Another example is, this is a property on a class four road. It has 75 total acres, 72 acres which are buildable, so there's some wetlands and steep slopes on it. The existing regulations, under our existing regulations, it would be permitted to have 25 lots up there, so potentially 25 homes. Under our proposed regulations, because we don't want to encourage development on class four town roads, it would only be allowed to have six lots.
You think that's going to take people off?
Yes.
Do you think it would be useful to show a map of the class four roads? I mean, when you, if you've on, if you've been on them, they are...
I think you just have to show another scenario where there's incentives to count this.
See, not, we should allow any of them.
You'd say that it's just better than what two thought.
The idea was to show, I mean, if we can communicate what the conditions of class four town roads are, I think a reasonable person would say, yeah.
Do you have an example? Like, an example, picture of a, because, because you, you know, if you're the general public, you're like, I don't...
I think that they're not...
Yeah, and you're like, you're like, what is a class four? How is that necessarily...
We could get a photo.
I mean, I know, but like, a good example is like, basically like, logging trails are, is what they're comparable to. I mean, they're really...
They can be. Some can be better, but...
They can be, yeah, but like, you know, if we... Yeah, but like, you know, if we have something that we can show people like, this is the kind of thing that, you know, obviously, we don't want 25 houses on a road that looks like this, you know?
I mean, even if you were as, as blunt as saying, you know, putting a picture of a class four road and then having a picture of an ambulance driving through the mud and another picture of like two cars turning across each other.
Unfortunately, we don't have a picture of an ambulance getting stuck in the mud. But.
It's mud season.
We could Google search it.
How many class four roads are there in Brattleboro?
I think there's four, maybe a couple more, but.
Their total length is not huge either. The issue would be that they provide access to some of the largest tracts of undeveloped land in the town for obvious reasons, right? So, but there are not a great deal. What was the name of the one that we went on that?
I think this is Star.
That's it, right?
Yeah.
The one you didn't like, and I didn't notice?
Yeah, I didn't like that one, it was scary.
Yeah, I thought it was fine, but that's.
Star Road's not too bad.
Well, no, Star Road is actually probably in good condition as opposed to Halliday Brook Road.
If you just, you know, if you just said post-regulation, then it would sound totally reasonable.
Right. And I think that the motivation here, to be really clear, if we tie it back to something here is that in discussions immediately post-Irene and subsequently, it's the emergency vehicle access and conditions of emergency that, that made it really clear. And so, over time, also what happens is that people settle on class four roads and then basically start petitioning the town to upgrade the road. And we would have issues from that from a couple of different standpoints. One is that it's a, an unplanned for municipal infrastructure upgrade that has to be paid for. And so it's the entire tax base of the town paying for an upgrade of a road if it were to happen. And on the other hand, we wouldn't necessarily view that as a positive thing because then the impacts of development, including a dirt road with erosion and, and steep slopes and a whole bunch of other things come into play when you go to upgrade the road so that your impact on the physical landscape is actually significant when you start doing things like upgrading from a class four road.
Do people on a class four road pay lower taxes?
Not, not as a rate, but they, their land probably reflects the difficulty of access. There's a sort of a rough calculation for what it costs per acre for a buildable lot. And one of the factors that contributes to the lot being considered buildable or not is how good the access is. And from a straight-up standpoint, just getting the trucks there with the pieces of.
So, you just put that into.
Just to get there, to make the house is actually a mission. So it is.
Seventy-two divided by 12 equals six.
Yeah, and then maybe if I can throw in some pictures of class four roads and say that it's limited on four streets in the town.
You know, the other thing is, this preserves the rural character of those areas outside, like a lot of towns do with 27 acre minimum lot sizes.
Right, I think what we're trying to say is, these, these class four roads access rural environments. And, you know, by upgrading the road, you're diminishing, you know, you're, you're putting pressure on those rural environments. So, just, just leave it as it is. If you don't, if you wanna live, you know, in a conventional sort of suburban-style setting, don't settle.
Well, you could even have like one example, pictures of like, of density, like, this is what traditionally would look like, like an aerial view of a development. Like, this is what this would look like if under the conventional. Our proposal would be more something like this.
Could I suggest that?
We're gonna get there.
Could I suggest that you note that this permits 25 three-acre lots? Can the proposed regulation permit six 12-acre lots?
Well, we're saying get rid of the, what the existing, a suggestion was to get rid of what the existing regulation proposed.
So that we're just talking about seventy-two divided by 12 equals six.
Right.
I think to set the context of this better, we do need some pictures that shows the narrowness of a class four road or the condition or. And I think linking it to post-Irene would probably help to set.
Yeah.
Set the stage better?
Do you know what slide number that is? If you tell from the.
It's 19. But there's actually another thing that I can do coming up. And so then the last step in determining the number of lots is to apply, apply the cumulative.
Cumulative.
I know.
Cumulative density. Which means you could get additional lots for each of these.
And we give you a bonus if you can say it really quickly.
And what I probably should follow it up with here is maybe going back to those two examples, the seven acres and showing how they can get more lots out of it if they've done certain things. So this is just the say it, say it every time, so.
Right.
So we're gonna determine, in order to determine the number of lots, we're gonna determine the buildable area, determine the number of lots based on the buildable area, and then apply density incentives. So the next issue that we want to address is how to allow more flexibility in the layout of the subdivision. So, we have new expectations of how it should be designed. Right now, the picture on the left shows a conventional subdivision. This is five lots, and each lot is along the road. See the red lines and hit the personal lines of the new lots. What we want to do is we want to enable developers to be able to cluster the, the development if they wish, to preserve the natural and physical features of the sites and cultural features, whatever might give, might make the subdivision more marketable. And so in the example on the right, the lots are smaller because we're doing away with a minimum lot size in the rural and rural residential. So you don't have to have three-acre lots and become smaller.
The text is pretty hard to read.
Yeah, I think we're gonna make them black.
The spot between?
Yeah, I don't think we can.
I mean, if you just read it, some people understand what it says, that might be the easier way, but I'm just saying. People are gonna be asking what the heck that says.
Yeah, okay.
I can't even figure out what the one on the bottom right is.
Conserv.
It's a conserv parcel.
Conserv parcel.
Conserv parcel.
I'm not sure when you get the touchy. So we might have to talk through what the benefits are with the development on the right. And in this example, it's, you've created contiguous forest parcels. Those, the yellow arrow is showing that it's contiguous forest land. From the bottom arrow is indicating that you've created a conserv parcel and you've allowed for five lots. And the last one is along the road frontage, roadway access is preserved. So this does two things. First of all, you can access the conserv parcel, so maybe you can have public trails on it. Or it just provides a visual break in the streetscape. So, as we mentioned, there's been a lot of development along the road frontage and that disrupts the rural character because you no longer have the forested feel or the view of the fields, and it just becomes rural sprawl. And this is just another view of that subdivision layout that we're trying to encourage. So the steps to lay out a subdivision are gonna be to identify the unbuilt the areas. And that kind of relates back to our first, what we were just talking about where we're going for a buildable area. So those are the same features that we're gonna identify where the steep slopes are. The second step is to identify cultural, natural, and historic features. The third step is to identify areas that can be developed, and then the fourth is to lay out the subdivision. So step one is, again, we're looking at steep slopes. We're looking at any streams, wetlands, any buffer areas, any floodplain on the property. And so, this is a drawing of the property. And you'll see that the brown hashed areas are steep slopes. Those are the slopes that are 20, greater than 25%. The green is a brook that runs through the property. The green area is the setback to that. This property doesn't have floodplains, because there's no floodplains on that. So, that's identifying the unbuilt the areas. And in a sense, that's already been done, what we've just talked about. And then the second step is to identify cultural, historical, and other natural resources. So for this property, it's agricultural soils, which are shown in the light tan color. Any existing trails maybe that are on the property. Here is the light orange in the upper left part of the screen. There's a wildlife corridor right off of the property. And then there is existing vegetation that's shown on the drawing too. There's some hedgerows on the field, some forested areas that are shown.
Is that a cemetery?
No. It's a barn. It looks like they're grass. Those are the, yeah, I should say, the existing buildings are also part of the cultural features. And then, step three is to identify the areas that can be developed, and these are shown in that greenish yellow. They also, in this case, coincide with agricultural land. So this is where a developer is gonna make some decisions about, there might be some trade-offs as to what's developable. So we're not saying that you can't build in those historical and cultural areas, but we're just identifying the areas at this point. And then, the last step is to add lot lines and roads. And so, in this example, all the development is kind of clustered around the existing buildings, but a new road was brought through. And the yellow dashed lines throughout the property are some trail connections. Lots of agricultural, agric, agricultural soil is preserved. So this is a layout that would not be allowed under the existing zoning because these are smaller lot sizes than the existing regulations would permit. But we think that this is better at maintaining rural character and respecting the natural and physical features of the property.
Does this include a bonus for keeping more of the open space?
I haven't actually done the numbers, but that would probably be a good point to say. Because they kept more than 50% of the buildable area, it looks like, yeah.
So if that wasn't provided in the drawing, you could probably have another little lot on the right side there. I realize that we can't go back and redraw it. But could you note that that would also be?
Is it, as, as planners, is it good to encourage people to buy or to split up parcels so that, so that they're on both sides of the water? Just like in general terms, is that, is that encouraged? Does it even matter?
I would say in the process that we're probably, we're trying not to fragment features like that. I mean, I think in the.
Yeah, that is a good question.
That's a good question because there's two street crossings there.
And we're not gonna be able to change this now.
Well, I'm just, you know, for discussion purposes, yeah.
No, I mean, it wouldn't be, the idea of the clustering would be to not.
You're actually very interesting point because you need to get permits to cross both of them from A and R.
Well, not at the property.
What's that?
The property might.
The property might.
Not the road, the road would, yeah.
Right.
I was thinking, two bridges, it sounds expensive for me.
It would be, it would be.
It's an interesting, I mean.
Yeah, it's an interesting problem. Mostly, even from the permitting standpoint, that would be interesting.
Well, we could make, I mean, this is just one.
It's one example.
One possibility. It could be developed in other ways where you didn't have to.
Because you'd have to prove alternatives and then show me our alternatives.
Right. I mean, you know, four is that it makes for a nice compact development in each of the parcels, where you get those two parcels on the other side of the brook. You know, they're, they're appealing parcels because they've got a brook frontage.
I think what it also does too is it helps to show a more, more traditional layout for a road, like less.
Yes.
Because if you cluster them all up on the main corridor, you're just gonna get one long corridor.
Right.
This kind of shows an example of like, if you were to add a road, this would be a much more pleasing way to do it, rather than throwing in a bunch of cul-de-sacs in each of the quadrants of the park.
Which is not compatible with the town plan either because after Irene, we had talked about.
Yeah.
Not being isolated. We wanted people to have more than one way.
Yeah.
I mean, this creates something of a little handler, I guess.
Yeah.
Which I think is good. And so, I think it's a good example to work through the weighing of the challenge of the two brook crossings versus the benefits that the design brings in other ways.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a good discussion point.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, and I'm sure that the cost of the bridges would be the first thing on the developer's mind, although.
For two lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I mean, there's cost of the bridges, but then there's also the A and R not allowing.
Right, yes. There's a guy in Vernon that actually sells these bridges. It's not that bad. I know.
You mean a bridge?
Just buy it on Craigslist?
Yeah. Here he's got it.
Ebay.
Yeah.
Ebay.
Does it on Ebay?
So, the benefits of this design process for the community is a lower impact to local water quality and the natural environment. It's the ability to retain significant local features and rural views, and it's reduced infrastructure, reduced maintenance. For the developer, it's the potential to produce a quality product that will sell well. Potential for reduced infrastructure costs. Flexibility to develop in a way that avoids costly and difficult building areas. And it's the possibility to increase the number of homes depending on regulations and policies. And, the planning department is here to help. One of the things that the regulations require is a pre-application meeting. And it's an opportunity for an applicant to consult informally with the town. Benefits are, is that it can decrease the cost to the developer. It can eliminate inadequate design in the early stages, and it helps developers and landlords understand the property better. And.
This reminds me, when we're talking about mapping the things where you can't build, I think you should mention that any old schmo could come and get that mapping data.
Yeah, I was just, when I was reading this, and it says developer, I think we should probably change it to applicant because we don't have very many developers, so I don't want it to reflect. But yeah. And we have, you know, another purpose for a pre-application meeting is that we have a lot of this information mapped which you can use to start a basis. So we have GIS data, we have a parcel database that we can calculate buildable area. And then we also have access to the state, state's collection of natural resource data from our firefender database. So we can help make it easy. A lot of slides were rearranged. I had trouble, like, with all the charts before, it just, it was really clunky to talk to. Getting into the feature-based density got a little too techie. I think I was losing on that stuff. So I tried to, with your suggestion to show pictures of your steep slope, it's out.
This wasn't really worth making an issue of, but on your incentives page, when you note the 50%, one plus one for every 10%, it's worded kind of clumsily.
It still is, yeah.
I mean, I understand it, but I think if you didn't have familiarity with the concept, you might not.
It's super chunky. It's super chunky.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. It's hard, we've tossed around different kinds of language.
But, you know, it's tough when you know what you're talking about and you're talking to someone that does not.
Right.
I think it's great, though. When do we, when do we disseminate this stuff? Pretty soon, right?
Are we done? Do you want me to put the lights back up?
Yeah. I've got an upcoming agricultural advisory committee meeting, might be this Thursday or it might be some point next week, but I was going to present to them. I sent an email to, I wasn't necessarily going to do this presentation, but we could do it. I sent an email to Tim Pufferson, the chair of the DRB, to do a joint meeting with the DRB where we discuss both subdivision regulations, particularly implementation, how the DRB members view it from an implementing standpoint, not so much a policy standpoint, but then also to talk about zoning and whether there are issues with the zoning, since we're the best We could do a public informational, you know, at our April meeting, unless you can do a special meeting. I do need to contact West Brattleboro Association and start getting it. I mean, if this looks generally good, I know I need to do practice stuff.
Yeah, no, let's do it. Unless anybody disagrees.
So I will let you know when we've got presentations going on.
Thank you, Sue and Ron.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, we don't actually have to do any of this stuff, and we just sit here and criticize it, but...
That's your job.
We do appreciate it.
Just make suggestions and then get that.
Yeah, no.
So I'm, are we all set there?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to take a little walk back through. This is just because we didn't have a point on before. We still need to approve our minutes from the last meeting.
Yep.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Motion to approve the meeting.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four, nothing. So now we have to deal with this Act 248 application on the stealth monopane. Great name for a ban, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I know. I know. It's like...
Keeping that theme going through the whole meeting.
Right.
I would listen to the monopane.
You should have received in your packets a chunky application from a law firm called Murphy Sullivan Crump on behalf of American Towers LLC and Verizon Wireless. And it's for a proposed cellphone tower off Meadow Brook Road in West Brattleboro. And is, what they've done is they notified us through this mailing that they, that they intend to apply for a certificate of public good from the Public Service Board to be able to install this telecommunications tower on land in West Brattleboro. And what they've done here is that they've included the relevant application material. The process is, has been, in 2011, the Public Service Board modified some of their procedures with regard to telecommunications towers, and they've applied under that process, and they note that in their letter. And so I circulated a memo tonight that basically summarizes some of the information from their application and some of the information from the amended, the order of amendment from the Public Service Board, and stepped through the process a little bit for you. Because we're the host community, the Planning Commission and the Select Board are able to exercise their ability to comment on the application, but we're constrained in the way that we can comment. We have to reference substantive criteria that are established by the Public Service Board. And then to further complicate things a little bit more, because the size of this project meets the so-called definition, the definition of the so-called limited size and scope, in other words, it's less than 140 feet high, and there's less earth disturbance than 10,000 square feet, the Public Service Board can conditionally waive a large amount of the substantive criteria that the project could be reviewed against and thus eliminate the amount of material that we could comment on in terms of the application. So before we get to that question, let me just say that I reviewed the application with reference to the requirements of subsection A and found it to be complete, except in one minor regard that could possibly be subject to legal definition differences. So they read our town plan, which is what they're required to do, and to comment on it in terms of whether their project conforms with the town plan, and they also had to do that for the regional plan. And so what they find is that we don't say anything explicit about telecommunications towers from an environmental impact standpoint, which is correct. They identify that we say things that are broadly supportive of improving infrastructure to encourage and accommodate the growth of technology-based jobs. Then they go on to specifically state that the proposed project conforms to, that it would conform to the town goals with regard to protection and enhancement of the town's natural resources in four specific ways. The first one is that they elected to use a stealth monopane tower, that they proposed pink, that aluminum trump, brown, and the antenna, that they will use underground utilities servicing the project site, and that they'll utilize an existing logging road, and that they will use expert impact assessment evaluations for the site with regard to a whole lot of other criteria that the Agency of Natural Resources and potentially the Department of Housing and Community Development could intervene around. So what that means is that the one thing that they didn't include was a map that we use on page 160 of the town plan that shows natural resources and breaks them out into a couple of different categories. And I think I've got the town plan.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I stole it to look at.
That's okay. So, yeah. So you'll see here in...
Scenic resources.
Yeah, this is natural assets, and what we do is identify wildlife habitat, drinking water resources, steep slopes, which are a natural asset, it turns out, and scenic view sheds. And literally, the property that we're talking about that's impacted is just to the west of this binocular icon, which is the one for scenic view shed. Which is interesting. So the issue that an attorney might identify is that this map doesn't have any regulatory bearing. This is at best an indicative map. It doesn't, there's nothing contained in this map that constrains or confines or controls what a property owner can do. So it's merely, yeah.
But it is identified as a scenic resource.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And so...
It doesn't say anything to the fact that we can't, knowing, it doesn't say like, yes, this is a scenic resource, but you can't, you can't build anything. All we said was that, yeah, it's valuable. And that, you know...
I agree with your recommendation that we ask for a visual impact analysis.
Oh, did you get one of these?
Yeah, I have one of my...
No, I just handed one out at the beginning of the meeting, so if you didn't get it at the beginning.
You know, there was one of these constructed in an area that I would consider to be, what is it called?
View shed.
View shed. Right next to the interstate as you get, go over the bridge adding north. And, you know, that area to me is a significant view shed, but to me, it had very little impact on how the area looked.
Does it shape like a tree?
It's not like a tree.
Funny, I used to see it and I don't anymore.
And there's one, there's one right next to the interstate in Vernon when you're traveling north.
Right.
That is, I think, is even higher and much more prominent.
Well, you raise an interesting point, because then the other issue here is that this is the, this is the proposed project location, and it's going to be 100 feet tall, and it's at roughly somewhere between 700 and 720 in terms of, you know, feet. Whereas the ridge line keeps on going up. So depending on which angle that you're actually looking at the proposed tower from, there's a backdrop of the hillside with more, with natural trees.
With high trees.
With high trees. So you, it will not necessarily stand out against the, against the ridge line. It will actually be backdroped by, by hillside with trees on it. So in terms of its visual, so what we're asking for is just confirmation, I guess, through the visual impact analysis, that for the most part, it won't constitute an impact on the, on the view shed.
And what they'll probably do is give you a photo simulation.
Yes, exactly.
Of what it looks like from various vantage points.
Yeah, a photo simulation would be nice.
Yeah. So let's ask for it.
Like, bury the power lines?
I make a motion that we ask...
Yeah, they're going to bury everything that services the site.
I make a motion that we ask for a visual impact analysis for this project.
Just to be clear, we're submitting a comment asking for that.
Yes. That's okay.
Second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? I see James wants to be heard.
I'll do it for a dollar.
Oh, I do believe, are you on the list of expert impact assessment evaluators? I'm sure you are, James, so...
Really?
Yeah.
Cool.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we just charged that duty.
Okay.
Thank you. So that brings us to a review and approval of a report for the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to establish the Red Clover Commons PUD. And do we have any extra stuff?
Yeah.
I feel like I don't have...
Does anybody else need it?
Has, has anybody?
I'm not sure I had it.
Because I'm a little confused about this, we're just doing the PUD on this, right?
Yeah, the Planning Commission's only doing the PUD, but it takes a zoning change. And so the applicants, I don't know if the decision's been issued, but they, did the DRB grant preliminary?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So what we're doing is we're just getting everything in line so that when the appropriate time, it might be April, it could be May, but the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, but the Planning Commission has to sign off on a report that gets publicized. Yeah, it's the amended agenda. Isn't that the amended agenda on Thursday?
You remember the flow chart of the PUD approval from our town plan?
Yeah. Wasn't this something that we thought at some point we were going to address, like this question line?
We will with the zoning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, yeah. But for now, they're stuck.
Yeah. And since we have a required report, the, the items that we have to address are done by statute, so...
Okay.
This is just signing off so that maybe at the April, we'll do a public hearing.
Right.
And then we'll forward it on.
Didn't they come to us before?
Yes.
Hence the need to strip them.
Okay.
Yeah. So what they did when they first came to us was, was to basically identify their interest in pursuing a PUD.
Okay.
And so it was a broad discussion about the concept plan that lay behind the PUD application. And so...
Is this for the Brattleboro housing program?
Yes.
And so now, so now they're saying, no, but seriously, we really are interested in this?
We have not managed to dissuade them from pursuing this, so we don't want it. And we haven't even disappointed them so badly in terms of how long it takes. So, so they've gone and got the preliminary plat, approval from the Development Review Board. And so now, in this little long circuitous route...
Well, between me being on both boards, like, I haven't seen these guys five times already.
Yeah, you'll be seeing them a lot more when this is over, and then you'll be ready to move in. So, so you should, so this, so this process is to merely, you know, submit the report, which is part of the zoning amendment process. When we come, when they come back here, it'll be to attend to that aspect of the project. And then it goes from here, back to the DAB for...
Final plat.
Final plat.
And then to the Select.
And then to the Select Board for the fine, for the public hearing associated with the permanent change to the zoning amendment to acknowledge the creation of the PUD.
They also have Act 250.
And they have Act...
Yeah, I was about to say, I was like, don't they?
I don't feel so bad because right now, they're involved in trying to get Act 250 now. So, yeah.
So let's, let's cut right to the chase.
That's an example of how the new zoning work streamline this process.
Yes. Yes.
It wouldn't hurt for us to remind them of that early and often.
Who's they?
Select Board.
Right. Yes.
Well, but, I mean, the bottom line is this is a fairly perfunctory task we have tonight.
Yes.
It's just to say that a PUD can exist.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Yes.
All right. Why don't we get a motion? If we have discussion, we'll have a discussion.
Make a motion.
Okay, so just to be clear, that's a motion...
To approve this report.
Oh, okay. Second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, four, nothing. Okay, so we are now back on our agenda. It only took an hour and six minutes for us to return to our place. Zoning bylaw training.
We are just mumbling together as to whether it's worth pursuing this.
Do you want to hold off?
Right now.
We'd like to have the entire board.
Board, yeah.
Motion table that?
On the same page?
Yeah.
Any second?
Second.
Actually, I don't get to, yeah.
I move the table. David, second. Let's number it, our letter age zoning bylaw training. Any discussion? Okay, well, for this part of discussion, let's make that like bold in our next email.
Yep.
We're doing a really big project. Can you please come to our next meeting so we don't screw it up?
Right.
So all those in favor?
Maybe we could incentivize with like pizzas.
I think that's a great idea.
We could eat in here.
Hey.
It'd be great.
Like, do you fire us?
What proof could there be?
Yeah, right. Dog, my pet. All those in favor of tabling this? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? None. So that's passed.
Okay.
In other business, I do want to mention that what we're doing here, to be clear, is moving the zoning bylaw rewrite up, partially because of how long the subdivision rewrite's taking, and I want to get stuff from the town plan implemented, and partially because I think it's the most important thing we can do and we should do it because we're all enthusiastic about it. What the, the cost of doing this is that it will at least push fluvial erosion hazard zone back. So if anybody has a problem with this, now is the time to say, hey, James, why are we doing this?
I think, I think it's, I think it's good to move it up. I think the risk of the next Irene is hopefully some years away, so we can, I think we can afford to move this up and put that on the back burner for right now. Plus, depending on what we do with zoning could affect...
It may kill, it may kill all birds.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that we just discussed that are in the subdivision, and then will also be in the zone to be helping flood.
Other projects coming up that would involve either one of those that would be important to have?
I, I can answer that in a sort of a partial way. So any project that is either 10 housing units or 10 acres or more...
So no.
Yes, so basically no. But if that would, if somebody were to come along and propose something of that scale, then it's an Act 250 permit, and the Agency of Natural Resources maintains the fluvial erosion hazard area maps, and so they would be required to respond to that criteria to obtain their Act 250 permit.
I mean, over the next, the only thing that I can think of over the next like five years in terms of big, unless something comes out of Fluff Field... in terms of big, unless something comes out of the flood field, is that housing, the housing authority has said that they want to eventually pursue another development.
I can't imagine they'd be interested in the flood zone.
No, no, exactly.
Because they can't use federal funds in the.
In the flood zone, so, yeah, that, I mean, in terms of on the, on the horizon of big projects, I think that's the only one.
They'd have to file that under bludgeon for punishment anyway.
Yeah.
And I mean, the other thing is, the town plan, you know, like any political issue, now that it's passed, it becomes yesterday's news, and I think the sooner we can tackle the things we identified in the town plan before we have personnel changeover, like, we've got the same board intact that did the plan, so we know why we did that stuff for the most part.
I know.
And we won't have people coming in like, what's a town plan, why did we do the town plan? Is the town plan the law, why do we have to change that?
I think it's one we're removing from the select.
And I mean, how many years out are we from Town Plan 2 already?
No, it was last summer.
Four, it was 2013, it's good until 2018.
Was it August or July?
It was February.
February.
It's February of 2013, right, though? Maybe we should have, like, a birthday cake party next year. Town plan pizza party.
Our baby turned one.
Yeah, there you go. That was a long, that was a long later.
Yeah, I tell you, yeah.
But, yeah, it'll be good to really actually start doing some of the stuff that we said we wanted to do.
We put out a RFP for the zoning, for a consultant for the zoning.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
So, those are due, we did get a grant, and we got an allocation.
From the select board from the budget.
So, the RFPs do, proposals are due at the end of the month, so.
And what, that will just be an expert opinion to help us?
It'll be a consultant.
Writing consultant.
Yeah, they'll be writing.
Oh, they'll be helping.
Helping with the public outreach.
On it.
And will still be involved and have decisions.
Now, I know Timbly was sort of joking, but I actually like this pizza idea. Can we do that?
I think it was David.
Or David, I'm sorry.
I was, I was serious.
Somebody's hungry, you're hungry.
No, I know, we have our meeting at 6, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, are we allowed to talk about toppings after the meeting without violating Vermont's?
Yeah, I don't think you can talk about toppings under open meeting, though.
Toppings, geez, somebody's really hungry.
I am pretty hungry right now.
Right, this is getting out of control, yeah.
Is that a doodle hole? My, my only concern is that at my old firm, we had pizza on a conference table, and the heat of the pizza stayed in the table, not the.
Very nice, the table.
This table.
I don't think there's any risk here.
This is like what the Russians made gun stocks out of.
It was a nice table, and somebody got in hot on top of it.
Ooh.
It wasn't me.
All right, so I feel fairly comfortable about it.
The lemonade table.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pizza party is.
Make sure, make sure everybody knows, and it's only Mark and Carolina that are not.
Yeah, so we need to, we definitely need to work on the recruitment issue.
But if, if someone was applied, maybe they could come to the pizza party as an observer and get some pizza, if they applied?
Yes, that would be good, wouldn't it? That'd be appealing.
So, anyone still watching this?
Yeah, right.
Maybe I'll even bake, James.
Oh, maybe.
Don't overpromise, don't overpromise.
Underpromise and overdeliver.
Okay, do we have any other business?
People said.
Wait, a quick, sorry, one quick question, now, you said that the RFPs were coming back, like, we can still move forward without having this consultant and stuff, I mean, it's not going to mess us up that we do that, no, okay.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No, okay.